Session, even though we only have one, one visitor here, sorry about that. For February first, at four P M. And do the roll call first, please.
Councilmember, Colin.
Here.
DeGolia, Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
And. And Mayor Whitmer.
Yes, I'm here. Okay. Are there any public comments for items that are on the agenda, either online or? Here in the audience? Or anything that's on the pack? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comments. All right, then we will go to the first item here, which is. Receive and file the mid-year budget report for F Y. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Robert or George?
For me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It is a different room than it was yesterday. And I wish we had more folks in the room because the budget is probably one of the most important policy documents that the council can actually put together. So the the mid-year budget is a high-level review of revenues and expenditures at the halfway point in fiscal year. Updates the council on the town's financial positions and makes recommendations for adjustments based on changed requirements, some service needs and some priorities. This fiscal year has some adjustments for mostly one-time operational needs, is probably, though, the largest. Mid-year adjustments that we've made since I've been here. But it is in direct relation to staffing shortages, overtime for the police department. And some capital infrastructure issues and some H R issues. The mid-year report is focused solely on the town's general fund, in other words, we're not talking about the capital improvement fund. There is some information in the staff report about capital improvements, but that's basically the same information that you receive in the monthly manager's report. So at mid-year this year, there is an additional need of about eight hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Of that, six hundred and fifty thousand of it are one-time expenditures, as I mentioned, related to some specific staffing needs, one-time operational facility maintenance expenditures. Some expansion of planning contract services directly related to the housing element. And the recent authorization of expensing O P E B. Thanks to one of our former council members in the room, produces a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings to the town's general fund at mid-year and nets the total additional need to around six hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Some of these costs can also be offset by ARPA. That COVID fund, we have set aside of about one point seven million. So, Robert, at some point before the end of this fiscal year, we'll do a reconciliation of that fund and make a recommendation of what we should reimburse the town's general fund or C I P fund from those ARPA funds. So within the overall, like I said, revenues exceed projections this year by one point six million. You don't necessarily need to make a budget amendment for revenue increases. So I'm not going to go through that summary in the interest of time unless you have any specific questions on the revenue portion of things. Yes, sir.
So on the on the E R A F, I remember from last year. There was a statement in the report. That indicated that the county was going to freeze our amount. And as the things escalated, it would, they would keep the extra. And. I thought our number was higher than the, excuse me, or sorry, bless you. I thought our number was was higher than what is in here, and I don't know whether or not that ever is actually begun to be in effect. The the county was going to freeze our amount, and I don't know whether I didn't, the numbers didn't match up with the past reports. So I was asking Robert, what what's up with that?
As far as the the freezing of the report, that was a suggestion when the state, before the state had done the guidelines and and when the county and the state were reviewing. What was? E R A F. Funding used for and how it was calculated. The guidelines have been updated and since then, there is no cap. It's basically, however, the what what E R A F funds are produced through the property tax increments in in each jurisdiction. What we discussed last year was in previous years, we had always budgeted E R A F at one point one million because of the. Before the the state grab of thinking that E R A F was going to go away eventually. There could be a component down the line that that could happen. But because of the last couple of years, our E R A F has become coming in higher. And specifically last year was at two point three million. In the budget, we had raised our projections from one point three, one point one million. What we have been doing to the actual two point three that we received last year. We did receive two, almost two point two, three million last year. And in the budget, we budgeted two, three, two million, three hundred and sixteen thousand in our budget. And what did come in was two million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand in this twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
So you so you're saying, though, the cap that was proposed in those amounts is not being implemented, right?
Correct.
So this number also reflects the, remember, they added schools, some of the charter schools and things like that that weren't previously included in that. And so the reason it didn't grow as much as it had been in the past would be perhaps that. That additional cost is being siphoned out for the charter schools.
I believe part of that was the 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 state believed that the counties were getting more. E R A F or jurisdictions the excess E R A F was going through because. They were not counting those. And so they did the calculations based off of the charters in the school districts within.
No, I I understand. Yeah, I understand that that they weren't counting them and the state said you need to start doing it by now.
Hmm.
And so.
And they have been.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, thanks. So the no cap, that's the important thing.
Correct.
All right, with, out any other questions on the revenue side, I'll move to the expenditure part of it. Within the building department, as you know, the building contract is revenue-based, and every year, this is typically what we. Actually, adjusted mid-year is the expenditure part of the building contract because it's based on revenues percentage. So when the revenues go up, the percentage of expenditures goes up as well. So that's a budget amendment of about six hundred or sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Within the administration department, a budget amendment in total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand. We have the A G S A event that you just recently approved for environmental programs committee work. During this fiscal year, there was also a need for some legal human resources assistance due to a claim that I believe the city attorney shared in brief. And that's a one-time expenditure. And then during the fiscal year, the town engaged other contract consultant services in relation to production of a up up. Scale newsletter, which has been going out to the community, website updates and some recruitment support because we're struggling to find. An associate senior engineer, we've been recruiting for that for quite some time and just haven't been able to find an applicant qualified to fill that role. So that those items total up to the one sixty-six, some of those are one-time, the recruitment's one-time, the legal human resources is one-time, the A G S A, I think, is also one-time. Then you move to the planning department. This is where your one of your larger impacts resides, and that's largely for the ramp-up of zoning work related to the housing element. And the switch over from good city to M group, we had some double up of activity for a couple of months. Interdepartmental forty-three thousand, that's just for property and liability insurance, true-ups for the year, police department, straight up overtime. And that's related to sick time and training COVID-related expenses. And then. For quite some time, many of our officers have not been able to go on vacation due to vacancies in the department. And so they played catch-up this year, taking vacations, and those have to be backfilled with overtime. So that's where that comes from. So that's a large hit as well. We are, we are at a full complement on the department, right? We are very, very, very close. The chief has not won his lobster dinner yet. And the reason I'm saying very close is we may have full complement, but they're not all on single duty. So they're still in their field training positions, not released to full-time. Once that happens, then he'll give us.
Go ahead. You have another one? Okay, so this is relates more to the. Police department, but overall. So you had different plans in here to hire certain people. And some of those hirings didn't happen on time, okay? And so in the case of the police department, there was overtime, it was also stated was reflected in the fact. That they were covering for positions that hadn't been done. So when they, those positions haven't been filled, we. There's the salary that we anticipated at that time, you know, it's the same thing I brought up to Mr. Flint at one time, okay?
There's there's salary savings that can be.
Salary and benefit savings. And so are we netting that out or are we just adding it like Mr. Flint wanted to do? With all due respect to Mr. Chief Flynn, but you know, when you have money that you're not using to ask for more, I think is. Not in good, good faith.
Correct, sorry. No, we we netted it out. We, in in previous years, the savings that we did have because of the, we weren't fully staffed. We use that to augment the overtime need. Now we're on the opposite side where we're becoming, we're fully staffed, we're using those regular salary expenditures. And it just happened to be the, there's the training, the sick time with COVID. And then also with the vacations that are happening. So those those are attributing to the 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 ask for additional funding.
Okay, so in the future, could you be clear about that in the write-up? How much money didn't get used because of the the timeframe that expired when the? You know, between when we we budgeted for a whole year and then they don't hire till December, well, that's a half a year of salary plus benefits. And so it'd be nice if we knew what those two numbers were and how they net out, and that would, I appreciate that. So I don't have to ask this question every year.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I just wanted to ask if you're going to walk through what appears in the report as a spreadsheet, can you put it on the screen so we can follow along?
It's just the staff report, not a spreadsheet. I'm on page. Eight of fourteen on the staff report.
Okay.
So the 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 last adjustment is within the public works department. And as you know, as I mentioned earlier, we're working without a vacant senior engineer position for most of this year, still struggling to recruit for that. We've engaged consultant services for a backfill, but those consultant services come at a premium cost and for project management as well. So that's ones there. And then there are some repair and maintenance items, water pipe replacement, sewer line replacement. And some painting and plumbing repairs that were required within the Gilmore House at the park. And that's item number ten there. And that's what totals up to the total budget amendment for the year of that amount. Like I said, a significant amount of that is one-time expenditures and can be used. We can use ARPA funds for that, and we can true that up at the end of the year and reimburse the general fund.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
You keep using the terms that these are one-time expenses. And so going into twenty-three, twenty-four, you don't expect to see this type of. Adjustment or or this type of of budget, budget numbers coming forward?
Correct. Well, let me let me back up, I'll run through them again here. So within the building department, that one, as we know, is a revenue expenditure true up. So that one could occur again in mid-year.
Okay.
Within the administration department, I don't think we'll be doing A G S A again, but you never know. The legal human.
Yeah.
Biggest thing there is the hundred and twenty thousand dollar.
Housing. Yeah, H R, yes, exactly. And that one, I don't anticipate us incurring again.
That won't be in the line item for our next budget then.
No, I don't think so. No, that that's a legal cost that won't be in there next year.
And the two hundred and twenty-three, I mean, how do we, for the police, I, you know, overtime has always, always been a problem. And every time, you know, we come to these mid-year adjustments, police overtime is a big part of it. I've never seen it this big, but you said.
Most of that's related to COVID and vacation. So I don't expect it to be that tall, that large next year. And the chief and I have talked about, and I think we did it in this year's budget, separating out overtime into overtime related to. COVID or illness or whatever else is going on there. Or staffing and then overtime related to special deployment for burglary and other things. So he's tagging it to two different accounts. And this one is largely related to the, to the COVID pandemic stuff, vacations.
So.
Hopefully that goes away next year.
And my my question about P D. Also applies to the public works where you talked about, well, we, you know, we're hired. The mechanical guy, we're hoping to hire the new engineer, which we still haven't hired, and he quit before the beginning of this fiscal year. So there is, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. I know you had Steve Tyler here. I don't know what his cost has been, but. Anyway, so the the the, my same comment applies to that, too. So, you know, I think that there, and some of these things, as I look at them, I think, okay, well, I'm sure you're spending extra money. However. I'm not sure that we're accounting for that, and just because it was budgeted, doesn't mean it's your right to spend it if if for some reason we're we're then spending more, you know?
Totally, totally get it. The the engineering position is a situation where the consultant services cost more than the senior engineer.
Okay.
To fill. So we've run through that as a as a net. And then on the maintenance manager position, we actually just hired Tony and and Tony should be introduced to the council at the February fifteenth council meeting, the maintenance manager to replace. The role that Steve Tyler's been filling under contract, right?
Yeah, he was taking a tour yesterday with Robert. Robert brought him in.
Yeah, he'll be introduced to you next week or in two weeks.
Yeah.
And then following this, you got a summary of total expenditure summary, total budget summary. And scrolling down to page ten of fourteen is probably the most important. Table, which is the projected year-end balance, the projected unallocated. Fund balance is six point seven million. That's the unallocated portion of the general fund after you've done the fifteen and fifteen for your reserves. And then you also see in there the one point seven for ARPA, which is a set-aside fund right now, which will true up at the end of the year and reimburse the general fund based on council direction.
Wait, sorry, what? Where are the reserves on there is?
On the bottom part of that table starts with.
Oh, I, no, oh, yeah, there's the two, okay. Okay.
We reduce the reserve amount this year.
It used to be fifteen and twenty, now it's fifteen, fifteen.
We have a public comment.
Yeah. There's no ARPA money in that, right?
There's no ARPA money in the unallocated fund balance, just in the set-aside fund right now. Right. And Robert's going to put together a recommendation summary of what we can charge against that and reimburse the general fund. So that'll end up going back to that six point seven.
What about the N S U money?
The N S U money is in the C I P fund as part of the grant.
Okay, this is showing, well, I know, comes in as revenue and then we've reallocated it out to the C I P.
No, it goes directly into the.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure we're accounting for everything.
Yeah, it's in the capital improvement fund in within the C I P.
Just to be clear, there's. There's no return to the general fund from the contingencies on the town center project yet. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
But.
We expended most of that.
We done with that, I mean, I I thought we're just waiting on the doors.
Yeah, and that'll conclude, once that occurs, we'll close that entire project out. There's not a lot left of the contingency. You may have seen that from the last town center financial. But that entire amount that we paid on the town side to S J A, we can charge against ARPA. And reimburse the general fund with that.
Well, most of the, when I last saw it, most of the contingency was going from the library.
Yes.
Rather than from the town.
Yeah.
And there was some over-allocation to the contingency for the town. So there should be.
Maybe about a dollar or so, about a hundred thousand or so.
Okay.
At the most.
Okay.
Would the P D overtime also potentially work with the ARPA?
Yeah, anything COVID-related, we could allocate from ARPA funds and get reimbursed for.
Well, that's in the American Rescue Reserve, correct?
Correct. So some of that will roll from that. Set-aside fund back into the generals funds, unallocated fund balances a reimbursement and will ultimately spend all of it.
So since you're talking about the ARPA, do you have like a preliminary list schedule of all the funds that are going to be charged against the ARPA funds?
That's what Robert's working on.
Robert's working on that.
Yeah, that'll come back to you as a separate item as part of the budget discussion.
And it could be lost revenue from the previous years. It can be facility funds for facility uses. Which listed in in page eleven of the uses. Government services, we can use it on responding to public health and economic impacts. Capital expenditures, some some stuff, some capital expenditures could.
What about the rejuvenation of the park, since it kind of got ignored during COVID, especially things like. You know, which are going to come in with a bid, you know, the event center and things like that. To me, that makes sense that we would do that because, you know, it it was, it was kind of spotty that we had people there and. You know, because they, many, several of them, I've been, all of them got COVID at one time. So.
Yeah. So line item number five, there's capital expenditure that are in direct response to public health and negative economic impacts. And I think the the park issues you're talking about might fall under that category.
Okay.
I thought that, not to debate it, because I don't want to, but I thought that. The landscape fee was coming out of our expense for the park. Not capital.
Landscape fee from bright.
He means the circulation.
Yeah, that's the capital improvement.
No, that's the circulation, but the but the maintaining of the park, we have a contract with. And we'll have more contracts with them as they decide to do the the irrigation and as they decide to do. You know, fix up the event center, the event garden and things like that. But just all the repairs that they're currently doing, which they're doing a great job on at, you know, of the grass and things like that. You know, that got let go during the COVID period. So I would think that that expense for supporting the park. Which was generally operating expense that could be covered under this, I would hope.
Well, we'll put together the list, and if it's the guidelines, then we'll put it in there.
Okay.
I, to the mayor, just to be clear, we only have one point seven.
Correct.
To play with.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Okay, just, just, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We're going to spend it, though.
I I know, but I just don't want to, you know, think that it's an unlimited amount, and we're going to throw everything in the kitchen sink.
Yeah, I understand that.
Hey.
The 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 guidelines that are in the staff report are abbreviated, but Robert will go through and look at the actual physical guidelines that are part of the ARPA guidelines. We'll see what we can put in there. And that's basically the report. There's no action on it now. This will come back to you as the budget amendment at the February fifteenth meeting.
Okay, all right, sorry for monopolizing the questions. This will be the last one on this section, I promise. We did a five-year spending plan just last year, Mr. Polito was part of that. And the numbers that you have in here don't seem to match up.
Nope, we're going to have to make adjustments to that.
And, you know, because it looks like the bikes have been cut back. I'm not saying that there is a puny amount, but the the numbers were cut back. Drainage was too, the green infrastructure grew substantially. Traffic, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, we still have to do signs and speed humps and things like that. So I think that that may not cover it. We were doing, you know, five hundred thousand dollars for roads. We were doing. Let's see, green infrastructure, facilities upgrade. Or potential repairs that you said had to be in there was, you know, another hundred thousand dollars. So it just didn't match up, and I just want to point that out, and I was surprised.
Well, we'll go back and look at that. I think this table is supposed to match what the council approved as part of the C I P.
Correct.
And so that's what was modified. When you approve the C I P budget, that we may not have gone back and modified. The five-years plan to match what you approved in the budget. So.
It's more like. Yeah, I was, I went back to the spreadsheet that we all worked on and said, that's our looking forward, not looking backward.
Spreadsheet we need to update based on what you approved in the budget rather than the budget being lowered because you guys approved the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we should look at that as developing our C I P. For next year, starting next month. When we get to the C I P, we should pull that out and just make sure we're addressing those things because we put in there a lot of things that needed to get done. And now it looks like they're waning, so to speak. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, do you want to move on to item number two? Item number two is review and provide direction to staff regarding a potential legislative advocacy advocacy program. Excuse me. As you know, both C C A G and the League have legislative platforms. Wall Street Public. Have legislative advocacy platforms that where they sponsor opposition or support of legislation. And and most of that aligns with the town, some of it may not, because it may be directed to charter cities or some other issue that the town is not as concerned about. But in the areas that it does and where it matches up with the town, we are often a lot slower than other agencies are putting together a letter of opposition or support. What this is proposing is to give the mayor and the city manager the authority to send off a letter in relatively rapid form. In support or opposition, provided that the town's position aligns with the League or C C A G's position. This could also be consistent with our our public policy group that supports us for housing. As well as our partner agencies, President of Clean Energy, Library J P A and others. As you, one of the recent things they brought up was a. Change to A B two, four, four, nine, related to remote meetings to allow groups that. Largely have a focus on commuting and trip reduction. And now we're forcing all these regional groups to meet in person, and we're adding more trip traffic. So a relief under A B two, four, four, nine to allow those groups to continue to meet remotely. And there was some piece of legislation for that. I know some council members responded independently supporting that, but if the town could issue a letter of support, that carries more weight. And so that's all it is, is some direction to staff to see if this idea might be worthwhile.
Just a comment. So, I mean, I looked through the C C A G stuff and, you know, there's. First off, it was easy to decide what, you know, which ones you think we are most important to us, you know, and I got my numbers. But I looked through the whole document on the League of Cities, and there was absolutely too much. So.
The the League has a very broad legislative platform. I'm not saying we would go through that platform and identify things and just start sending letters. It's only when things popped on our radar that we would send some sort of letter of support or opposition.
Yeah, I just, I would hope that, you know, the League would be. A little cleaner on, and maybe while Diane is down there, she can square this away.
Yeah, I know.
But, but, you know, as things are getting closer, I guess that's really when we need to look at it. They talk about stuff that's just being proposed or.
Right.
Got shelved last year, odds are it'll be shelved again this year, et cetera. And so there's a lot of minutia in there to spend looking through, what, twelve or fourteen pages of stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. We get, we get tagged, I know you get tagged as well via email requests to send support letters on behalf of the town. So it's just, once we get something like that, we'd look at it, make a determination whether it applies, doesn't apply, and whether we'd want to send a letter. Councilmember Hawkins.
So.
And.
Diana? Um, in looking through that, they had listed that they're working on a. Things around housing that actually do directly affect us. They're mounting a program against the, some of the laws that are taking away our control. Someone directly related to what we talked about last night. So I think we should specifically focus on some of those. And try to be involved as much as we can in the one that's that are really directed, directed toward us. And second, I have a question. I'm down here and I understand there's voting. Do I have to do the voting and what is that?
We don't know what you're voting on.
Usually, usually a council at a council meeting, we would have looked at the agenda item for the voting. And given authorization to the attendees to vote X, Y, Z on these issues. And that's what we've done in the past. So we didn't do that this time. I think it kind of snuck up on us.
Uh, usually it's at the September League Annual Conference.
Oh, that's right, it's at the.
I'm not exactly sure what they're.
No, this is the, yeah, this is the new mayors and council members academy to provide kind of background information for council members. So I don't think you're gonna be asked to make any decisions on behalf of the town.
Okay, okay, good. My, my comment about um, the um, difference between C CAG Legislative Committee and the League of California Cities is that you're right, Mayor, that the league is very broad. And uh, lots of times the Legislative Committee of C CAG, of which I am a member on, as well as C CAG, um, uh, aligns with the League of California Cities. Sometimes they don't. And so I think the Legislative Committee for C CAG is more in line with what is important to us and it has been vetted and, you know, you know, scrubbed, if you will, uh, in the light of what's beneficial for our county, um, San Mateo County. Um, that's not to say, um, some of the league things aren't good that we should take a look at. But um, I feel much more confident of giving a blank signature authority for things that are on the C CAG Legislative Committee rather than a blank um, signature authority on all of the things that the League of California Cities support.
The housing ones, because the housing ones are relevant for us off of the, the League of Cities.
I, I don't, have we had been asked, George, for a, a, a letter to support those at this time?
No, we haven't. And, and they, they produce all sorts of advocacy efforts uh, without even engaging local communities. That's their role. Uh, but uh, if we did receive something that said, hey, A B such and such is coming before the legislature, needs an opposition vote. That's what we're talking about, considering for a, a quick turnaround of a letter. And if it's something that's controversial or hot issue in this community, we would certainly encourage bringing it to the full council uh, for authorization to send that letter before sending it.
So another approach through the mayor, mayor, oh, sorry, go ahead, Rick. I, I've talked. I just had another suggestion.
Go ahead, finish up.
Um, so another approach that we might want to take is to create our own uh, subcommittee of legislative actions having to do with California legislation that we would task that subcommittee to take a look at what's pending uh, that might be important to our uh, immediate jurisdiction. Uh, and then be able to bring those uh, bills on a periodic basis, you know, as a report to the council for discussion.
If that's a annual committee or every bi-monthly committee, that's a standing committee versus a ad hoc committee. If you're, if you're looking at them to do a single issue focus, look over the platform, identify areas that are of concern to the town and then provide that report to the council is where the mayor or city manager has the authority to do it. That's kind of a one-time thing. But if it's a regular reporting mechanism, that would be standing committee.
Uh, yeah, oh, go ahead, Rick, you go next, sorry.
So I don't have any problem with the proposal of having the mayor and the city manager target issues that are important to us and generate a quick letter so it doesn't have to come back to the whole council. Unless the two of you judge that it's sufficiently controversial that it should. But um, I think that each time that a letter is proposed to be generated that there should be an email sent to all of the members of the council. So that if anybody on the council objects to the conclusion uh, to support or oppose, uh, that they have the opportunity to raise that. And if somebody opposes it, then I think it should come to the council.
Right, I agree.
I agree. I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, we, we could certainly do that as long as there's no discussion via the email. It's just, hey, I oppose the position of the letter and then we would stop and bring it to the council. Before we issued it, there may of course be a quick turnaround to that, to show you where, but.
That's why you're bringing it up.
Right.
So it, I think it's a good thing to bring up. I'm just saying I, there are positions taken by the League of California Cities that we may not support and may not be totally obvious just from looking at the surface of the issue. And there may have been a council member involved in that issue that knows something that um, could speak out about it. Uh, and if they don't, then they lose. But so, I, so I'm sympathetic to the desire. I think it's a good thing to be able to be efficient and respond quickly. But I just think, and people need to be informed so that if they want to, they can say something.
Yep, can do.
I think um,
I just wanted to read one paragraph to everybody from the summary. It says Cal City is also exploring additional ways to protect local control over land use at the ballot box. The Cal City Board of Directors has directed Cal Cities to look into the feasibility of a bad ballot measure in twenty twenty-four that fights back against state efforts to undermine the local land use authority.
God, believe that was number one.
It's not a number. It's, I'm reading the paragraph in the summary, that's the summary of what they've been doing this year. It's on page one or something. What page?
And then just to, just to, to point out, there is a difference between the League of California Cities legislative platform and advocacy versus a, a city pack um, ballot measure funding group and, and gra- and campaigning. So that, that'll separate, be separate from the town's legislative letters and correspondence.
Well, I think we need to support ourselves with, you know, and we're in this and, and the C CAG group and, you know, as, as uh, Elizabeth pointed out, they're a little closer to our ideas, whereas California cities is, is kind of playing a political game and wanna make anybody mad. You know, kind of wants to play nice with everybody and sometimes that doesn't match what our needs are. All the other towns, for example, on housing have commercial for the, you know, they may have commercial, they may have open land that they could build. And, you know, we don't, so we wanna coordinate with towns like ourselves on certain issues. That's all.
That big ballot measure though is, at least on the surface, without having read specifically is one hundred percent to our benefit and we should support that and express our support for it. It's about giving control back to local cities away from, most of them, by the way, are, are do align with our goals, at least the ones I've skimmed through.
Okay, Stacy, sorry.
All good. Um, I'm just curious, I'm, I would like to play out the idea of the subcommittee because I think it's interesting. If Elizabeth is on C CAG, she would know better about all these issues. It, it just seems like she should be more consulted. I mean, the email seems like that might take care of that, but she would have a lot more knowledge on this stuff than like the mayor would, because that'd be rotating, so. Just curious.
I, I think George is kind of dialed in pretty well also and staff. Um, but yeah, um, I guess um, I could do a better job of reporting back to um, council on what we do. It's every month. And um, um, I, I promised to do that. Actually, we used to report back on all, from all of our subcommittees um, to council um, every every month and.
Competition to see who could do it in writing.
I know. I, I, and then I had a um, a revolt. And they uh, everybody said, no, I'm not gonna do it anymore. Sort of.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think that that's a very good idea. And I've been on this now for a year and I don't, I don't know what's happening and all the other things. And at the same time, having sat on the fire thing every month and it's long and boring as you can imagine, having to summarize that would be brutal, but somewhere in between is a good idea. Because we don't report out on the meetings and it would help the rest of us if we did. So I agree with what Elizabeth is saying.
Well, I think that if uh, we do it voluntarily, then we could just shame our other council members into uh, complying or wanting to report from their committees too. So, okay.
If you looked at the agenda from yesterday's meeting, it said council reports.
Right.
No one stood up and said, I got one, okay?
Well, we weren't prepared.
Well, well, okay, but you, or you can see the agenda, it says council reports. If you wanna report something, please come.
I am gonna report on fire at one of our upcoming ones.
In, in fairness to council member Holland's comment, we, we used to write council reports. And when we wrote council reports, people really got reports. I mean, we were pretty serious about it. It took a fair amount of time, which is why we stopped it. But.
But it was good.
It, but we really communicated what we were doing on other committees to one another. And that was
That was good.
At least five years ago that we stopped it.
Every six months, maybe we should do it, but not every month.
Yeah, when um, council member Limpres was the mayor, I think he requested one every June, put it on the, the June study session agenda, council report outs, and then all the committees would report out at least once a year.
But, but some things.
It's ridiculous. So, excuse me. No, no, because then that's old news. You know, the trains left the station in lots of areas.
Yeah.
Well, I remember.
It's hard to remember. I, you know. Redwood City requires it. Redwood City. Barbara Pierce would go with me and, you know, we'd be on um, actually several committees together. And she'd be there writing, writing up her uh, council notes, ready to send it in.
Uh, another way that you could probably do it, uh, and Mona, uh, correct me if I err here. But if there are reports from your subcommittees, I include those in my Friday email notes when I get them. But it doesn't cover your liaison activities. So if you have a liaison report, we can all, you can always send it to me and I can include it in my Friday email, uh, so that the whole council has that report.
Yeah, he, he lists all the subcommittees and says nothing to report. If you've got something to report, then report it.
Yeah, that too.
We just wanna make sure that we are not inadvertently, right? We just wanna make sure that we're not inadvertently violating the Brown Act if one of you then responds, right? So that has to be a one-way.
Right.
You're not.
Yep, that, that, that would work. So then, because I'm sending it out in the Friday email and if you responded, you'd be responding to me instead of the council.
All right, well, you know, we can discuss it again at a further future study session when we're more relaxed.
There you go.
And didn't just have a giant meeting with a hundred and some odd people.
But if you call for committee reports at the next council meeting, be prepared to receive one.
I'll have one.
Okay, we'll have, I'll say council reports before we adjourn and you will have the floor, both of you.
Uh, just, just remember, those are one-way reports. Those aren't discussion items.
Right, it's just to report out.
And keep them short. We're not gonna stay here an extra hour listening to your reports, okay? Honestly, it's gotta be, you know, a two or three minute, you know, two-minute timer and I'll have Anthony turn on the timer. Okay, that's about all. Okay, three minutes for that.
Okay.
All right, we'll try and have some reports, okay? Uh, is there any other discussion? No, no. Okay, motion to adjourn.